Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Here.
Joy Grissom.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
William Maxwell. Bill Mosley. Mickey Robinson.
Here.
Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons. Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Michael Whitney.
Bruce, would you care to listen to the prayer?
We really want to thank you for the blessings that you give us tonight. All the blessings come from you. Oh, we really want to thank you for the blessings of being here. The people that live here. Oh, we pray your blessings to all these commissioners who they go over our county. Father, thank you to be with them in the city of the day. Father, we ask you to thank you also for your son and pain. Father, we ask for your forgiveness and praise on earth.
Amen. Everybody, please stand for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and peace.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of November sixteenth, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to make it to approve. Second, Mr. Van Winkle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number four, no renewal for Jessica Grissom, David Chandler, and Lee.
Chairman, I make the motion to approve it.
Mr. Mosley made the motion to approve. I hear second. Second, but Terry. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number, Commedia report.
All right, I'm filling for Wheel. Commedia, we met December the twenty ninth. First item, bid for the fire department. We only had one bid on this, and that was the Steve Frost Agency. A motion was made by Mr. Robertson to approve the bid from the Steve Frost Agency for fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars. Was seconded by Mr. Siemens. All voted yes. I'll make that in the form of a motion to approve the bid for the fire department's insurance.
I'll second. David. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next, we had a bid for the employees' health insurance. We just had one bid on that. It was Sprouse Insurance Agency. It would be at five hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixty six cents per employee for health insurance. Motion was made by Mr. Robertson to approve the bid and seconded by Mr. Siemens. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Yep. Next, we had the HVAC and Remy systems for the county buildings. This is part of the COVID money. The buildings included would be the administration building, the Burt Building, the library, and the Ag Learning Center. This is to replace those heating and air units and add the Remy system, which is a filtration system to help filter out viruses and things like that. A motion made by Mr. Robertson to approve the bid for seventy four thousand, five hundred dollars to the J and M Heating and Cooling. It was seconded by Mr. Siemens. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
Chairman, I second.
Mr. Mosley, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next, we had sanitation stations. This is part of the COVID money. A motion was made by Mr. Robertson to approve the bid for the X One Safety for eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, seconded by Mr. Chandler. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
I'll second.
But David, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next, the Remy Systems, filtration systems for all the churches. County, I think it was twenty nine churches that would receive these filtration systems. A motion was made by Mr. Robertson to approve a bid by J and M Heating and Cooling for eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And seconded by Mr. Siemens. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Mosley. Roll call, please.
David Chandler. Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
We did have. For the county general fund. This was for adding money in for autopsies. A motion was made by Mr. Siemens to increase line one zero one dash five four. One zero dash five nine nine to eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. This would be coming from fund balance three nine zero zero zero. That in form of a motion.
Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Rob. And.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next, we had a budget amendment for courthouse jailhouse maintenance. This was to move. Motion was made by Mr. Siemens to move fifteen thousand dollars to one one two five one eight zero zero dash one four nine and one thousand, one hundred dollars to one 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 two dash one five one eight zero zero dash two zero four from, well, let me see here, what, did I get this right, Jessica? From line item one one two two five one eight zero zero dash one six six. It was seconded by Mr. Chandler. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Mr. Siemens. Second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens. Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next, we had a budget amendment to the ambulance service fund. This was for the COVID bonus that we gave the county. The employees, one of our ambulance personnel had been skipped. No, he was off on leave, so this, but he did qualify for it. So that's what this is for. A motion was made by Mr. Siemens. Revenue line one one eight dash four seven four zero one by one thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars, fifty cents from the American Rescue Plan Funds. Also increased the expenditure. One one eight dash five five one three zero dash one three one by one thousand dollars. One one eight dash five five one three zero two zero one by six. Two dollars. One one eight dash five five one three zero dash two zero four by seventy dollars. One one eight dash five five one three zero dash two one. Zero by ten dollars. One one eight dash five five one three zero dash two one two by fourteen dollars and fifty cents. And one one eight dash five five one three zero. Two zero four by two hundred and ten dollars. It was seconded by Mr. Chandler. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, but David, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert. Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote?
I'd like to ask how, why are so many in one column?
Well, that's getting like social security and all that. That's what, that's what all them other, the seventy dollars. Ten dollars, that's social security and all that. That's what. It's basically breaking that bonus down.
I missed that late.
Motion carries.
And we had a budget amendment for the highway. A motion made by Mr. Robertson to increase line one three one dash six six zero 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 dash one two one zero by two hundred and ten dollars from. One. Three one dash three nine zero zero fund balance. It was seconded by Mr. Siemens. All voted yes, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Mr. Siemens, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Van. Roll, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Motion carries.
Next, we talked about the school budget meeting, which is coming up on the nineteenth at five thirty in the high school library. This is just a work session between the county court. School board to go budget. We then scheduled budget hearings for the twenty two, twenty three county budget that will be, be on February the. At ten AM in the conference room upstairs. We did have some solid waste fee exemptions, which no actions needed by the court there. And then that's it.
School board's meeting this weekend.
Tomorrow. Yeah, five thirty.
Anything else to be gained?
I hope not.
That, that meeting is going to be, Mr. Chairman, so everybody know, that meeting was. Was going to be at the library at the high school, am I right?
Yeah.
He won't be here at five thirty tomorrow.
Committee B report. They've been out by share, I didn't know I was by share of committee B. So I am not prepared. There's only really one item that was presented that night, and we met with Ms. Harmon with the, the two, two options for marketing BDS for sale. And option one, Ms. Harmon, you don't. You can explain this better than I can.
Put it in, please.
Yeah.
And it to committee B. I gave them my recommendation that we can market three twenty six Pine Grove, which was formerly BDS property. It's sixteen point four six acres. There's four buildings on it. And at the end of the day, they just thought we wanted to market it at two hundred and ninety nine thousand. And so I had professional pictures made, and we got it on market. So we've had seven live showings and a couple of virtual showings. So we did have three competing. It, everybody time to get their bid in, but do you want me to go ahead and tell the bids and everything?
Go ahead.
So we had three, three bids, two, one, I had brought two with me, one withdrew it right before we came. So, and they're very, very close. And I spoke with Mayor Wilson before I came here, and he's sick, but he had his recommendation. And my recommendation is that the county would counter offer, come up with a counter offer to these bids. So they're similar in price. One is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars cash. Now, remember, we were asking two hundred and ninety nine thousand. My recommendation was a little below that, but I went with what the, what the committee B wanted. So one bid is a hundred and sixty thousand, and it's cash, but they do have inspections, and they have a due diligence period where they can back out and get their earnest money back. Okay? Then we have a second offer. That would be financed through Citizens Tri-County, which I have confirmed is, they have approved that. And that one is for a hundred and fifty thousand with no inspection period. The closing dates are a little different, but either way, the county needs thirty days to get the trash compactor out. And one of the bids is asking for the air compressor. Both, both contracts, it's contingent on the county removing all the trash and debris that's in the buildings and around the buildings. So it's considerable amount. So Mayor Wilson felt like it was important for the county to counter these bids. And then I would go back and take it to both people that are making the offer. Say county is going to make a counter offer, but it's up to y'all to decide what your counter offer is. Or you can send it back to committee B and let committee B decide. One of the people making the offer is here, and he would like to tell what he wants to do with the property. And I did invite the other person to have a chance to tell. He's not here, so I'll just tell you, he wants to run, he manufactures microwaves, and he wanted to use the big garage as a manufacturing warehouse. He's not there to tell how cool and all that would be, but Bruce is here. So my recommendation is that come up with a counter offer so that we don't keep dragging this out. I can continue to show, but we have shown it. I mean, it's shown. Times in person, and then I've had several virtual tours. So. I think that we need to kind of come up with a counter, and then they can either accept, reject, or counter back. And the two people that. Have an offer in, so they would have a certain, we would put a deadline, they would have to get their counter back to us.
Ms. Harmon, you do realize all this you're talking about has got to go back in front of committee B first.
Well, if you didn't want, if you give a counter, it doesn't have to go back to committee B is what Greg told me, that we could come up with a counter tonight if he wanted to. And then, or you could throw it, or he. Put it back to committee B.
Can we have a committee B meeting? Before counter. Maybe you want to have one.
I just wouldn't have one, it's two weeks, ain't it? Then we have to advertise it. I mean, is that right?
Five day notice for us.
Five day notice for us. It would be whenever the paper comes out.
Right, I don't know what paper's going to be.
You could have it next week.
We have another meeting, that's what I'm saying, next, a week from tonight.
Listen. Listen, you'll be there right away, sir. Very good.
Do we want about that? Five o'clock, okay?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. We'll meet next Tuesday, five o'clock. Yeah, go ahead.
Evening, gentlemen. I plan to open a quick loop, break place out of the main shop area. My wife is always. Open a flower shop, cross business, and also my niece, we're planning on making the shed and converting it into a facility. We're going to do a pet salon and doggy daycare. That's what we have planned, and the shop will be. Thirty days after we get the paperwork done. And within two months, the flower shop, gift shop, and so on. Try to have all three businesses by September, at least. That's the plan.
We opened a new business up there.
I did. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Where? Oh, that's where he's. I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That was the only thing committee B had. Item number. Appointment of Gene Brock as county historian.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Gene Brock as county historian.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by David and a second by Mr. Mosley. On the. Any opposed? No, motion carries. Item number eight, appointment of Joe Chandler to County Heritage Historical Committee.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Mr. Robinson, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, but David. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries. Item number, BLTV franchise agreement. Anybody want to explain it?
The way Greg explained this to me is this agreement comes around once every fifteen years with Ben Lomond. So that's what the agreement is, it's just a franchise agreement.
Any action?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve BLTV. Agreement.
I got a motion, but David, go approve.
Just a second.
Do you have a second?
Is this a resolution or an agreement?
It's an agreement.
It don't need a number? The way I read it, it needs to be numbered. To go in.
Oops.
The minutes, yeah, but.
Paper says agreement, so. Need a number with it.
If he just says resolution, if he says, what was his, the, what did he say? And a motion, did anybody accept the agreement?
David. You state that as a resolution instead of an agreement.
Prove this resolution with Ben Lomond television franchise.
Acceptable?
Yes, it is, and then I'll put a number to it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Three percent. What the agreement says. It's three percent, and. They give us that much for like cable TV and other places. It's for all their services. It says three percent for all theirs, for services provided. Everybody agrees, let's see. The state does the rest of them through their franchising fees.
Yeah. Tribute out to nine one one, if I'm correct, is that right?
Yep.
All that goes to nine one one.
It's part what funds the nine one one system, which it comes to us and it goes to them. It's, we just funnel the money to them. The state gives money, but it goes actually, it's part of the nine one one funding across the state also.
That's your cell services and stuff.
Right, so they, they charge like a dollar for your phone and your cell, and you're playing for your home phone too. And the franchising fees go statewide in order to fund your nine one one centers. But they, they collect pool this money because we get money from, like Nashville has excess Davidson County, Shelby County, the larger counties have excess of money that they actually funnel to the smaller counties. Fund, because we can't, if you figure out how many phones are in this county, you couldn't fund your nine one one just off the phone charges. That wouldn't be enough. It is, but. Well, as their rates go up, the three. Increase also. I mean, yeah. So it still means more money. You can oppose it if you like. I don't know any of their seats, but. Not around here, I don't think.
Question.
Not to his satisfaction, but it didn't, it didn't answer the question.
About maybe got sixty, seventy percent with them. Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
It's the same that they pay. DeKalb County, Warren County, it's the same, they pay all of it. It's not just Benir. They all the same percentage. If there's, how many, yeah, but a lot of their business is going away too, when you look at home phones. So it's not like they're increasing their. Because their people that they're subscribers, they're actually dwindling. Yeah, it used to be big, now cell phones, it took that. But see, like, it's the same, and on the cell phone, is, you know, as far as franchise fees too, when it comes to Verizon, they take, take people like that, they still have to pay a franchising percentage also. It goes to the state. This is the only one that we have to give, be straight to us for. Rest of it all goes to the state, and then we get what they give us.
Ben Lomond calls. I got a motion, but I had to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second, but Terry. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
You want us to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number 10. Library appointment, Jen Burke to replace Crystal Young, Sherri Wilson, and Jeanette Justin. Pronounce that correct? Any action?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can you hear a second, who?
Bill.
Bill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Have any other new business?
The planning commission needs to appoint Dwayne Brock to their committee.
Brock. Any action?
Motion to approve Dwayne Brock.
Me, can I hear a second? Second, Mr. Van Winkle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business? Do we have some?
What about the $7 that was supposed to come off power bill December 31st of this year?
No, that was, uh, that agreement was with Fall Creek Falls Utility, not Canny Fork.
No, I'm paying $7.
That was just an agreement on collection of the money.
Yeah, that was just the agreement on collection of the money.
The mayor misspoke when he told you that.
The literature that was put out there is it supposed to come off December 31st? We had this discussion once before.
We did, and we said the mayor was wrong when he put that literature out there. I think I said that, so. He was, he misspoke. There was never a time limit on the $7 fee.
Was the mayor.
Yeah.
He can't make any decisions without the county committee, as far as what the county commission has to approve it. He misspoke.
Any other new business? You wanna agree? Explain the situation.
We have property at 1005 Ponie Creek Road, which is in the Ponie community behind the Way In. Driveway is actually a public road. Um, we have kept it up for 25 years. I spoke with Randy Oaks about taking it as a county road because it is a public road. He said he did not have a problem with that. He thought in the past that maybe the county had gravelled it, but they haven't as long as we have been there. So he said to bring it out here tonight, see if y'all would approve it. If he did, he would be glad to take it.
Something that needs committee B?
Yes. Would have to go through committee B, and you're talking about changing it to road blue and drive.
No, it's actually a road, but it, there's no, no one lives past us on it. I think.
What's the name of it again?
There's not a name on the road. It was never named, it was just listed as a public road.
Get the county road map and see where it ends.
But it's off a place. It's off of Ponie Creek.
I know what you're talking about, Ed. What I would advise you to do is when you have their committee B's, go with them and sit down and play. Show it, or they'll understand it.
Okay.
And then they can bring it back to the full commission that way.
Okay.
Does that be okay?
Yeah.
We have work from tonight, 5:00.
Okay.
This will come back then on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, Miss Andy.
Where you at? Canyon Creek Road?
Uh, Ponie Creek Road, off of Ponie.
You know where the Way In is?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in the crowd have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with adjourn.
I lost for a couple of seconds.
Everybody, we, we were all under the belief that the garbage fee was gonna come off. As you said, he misspoke, but in the county meeting, y'all are the ones that represent us, y'all are the ones that make the decision. If somebody misspeaks in the future, would you announce it so everybody understands it?
We corrected that before.
Before, but not, not when it was done.
I mean, I mean, I mean, that was quite a few months ago when we corrected that.
I think the problem was there was a letter that went out after that decision was, was made. Is that what you're talking about? There was a mail out.
It was.
When it was all discussed and agreed upon.
And that's what we're going by is what was going to be.
And he was just, I think the mayor was just saying he, he hoped he could go away, but, you know.
I would just think in the future going forward that, that y'all would.
It doesn't matter what the mayor says, I mean, this court is what, you know, passes it. And I mean, unless something, action is taken by the court, I mean, yes. Oh, yeah. No, we never voted on a, uh, nah, I mean, we never voted on that. Well, we have to run solid waste, that's the reason we have to keep it on there. I think they were anticipating a business to come in that did not, so. We go. Yeah, whatever it was, but, yeah.
Anything else? Got a motion, let me adjourn to here a second.
I'll second.
We're adjourned.